Good evening. The time is seven P M. And I will now call this public hearing to order. My name is Ryan Curly. I'm the first selectman in the town of Portland. And I first want to welcome everyone for coming out this evening. I know we have some not so great weather out there, so thank you all for being here. I know we have some members of the Board of Selectmen, some members of the Board of Education, our superintendent, Dr. Britton is here as well, and some members of the public. So thank you all. And for those who are joining us via YouTube Live, thank you for tuning in or watching us at a later date. The first thing I'd like to do this evening is to read the legal notice of tonight's public hearing. This is a legal notice of public hearing, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on the proposed budget for 2023 to 2024 to be held by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to section twelve oh one dot three of the Town of Portland Charter at the following place and time. Tuesday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. At the Buck Foreman Community Room, two sixty-five Main Street, Portland, Connecticut, in person and live streamed on Town of Portland YouTube. Subject: General Government, Board of Education, Budget, and All Other Special Revenue Funds. At this hearing, any resident or taxpayer may be heard concerning the proposed budgets. Copies of the proposed budget are available for inspection in the Town Clerk's Office, Public Library, and online at portlandct.org dated this first day of March twenty twenty-three. Revised location on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. attest Ryan J. Curly, First Selectman. So I do want to point out that this meeting was originally going to be held in the Library Media Center at the high school, but due to the inclement weather, it was moved yesterday to this location at the Buck Foreman Room. So if we could go to the next slide? Oh, just as a follow-up, here we go. Get the presentation up. All right. Is there a delay? I'm just asking because I still see, I have it on my phone.
Yeah, it should be.
I just want to make sure the slides show up, but we'll get started. So I'm going to go over the agenda for tonight's public hearing. The first is I'll do a brief review and update from the current year that we're in and the projects that we're working on. Then we will go over the general town government proposal, followed by the Board of Education proposal. Dr. Britton is here to go over the Board of Education's proposed budget. And then lastly, we will have public comments. I do want to remind those watching online that public comments this evening are only in person and also through writing. There will be other opportunities for public comment in the near future, but there's plenty of time to come down for public comment if you would like to do so. So we will move on to the next slide. I'd like to just go through a little summary over the past year. I think too far here. And the slides aren't showing up.
Oh, they are.
No. But bear with us one moment here some. We can just put the slides up. There it is. Awesome. So in twenty twenty-two, the long-planned Brainard Place project, the former Elmcrest property, is currently underway. That's been a long time coming, a lot of work from many people went into that over the years, and it's good to see this project finally moving forward. The town hired GZA Geo-Environmental, Inc. to assist in our search for town water. Progress on this is moving rapidly, and we should have more news on this soon. The remediation of two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue is nearing completion. Recent conversations have been in regards to how to best utilize the remaining grant funding available and to make the property as attractive as possible so we can get a developer in there and turn this over and start making some money for the taxpayers again on this property. Also, we completed the design for the connectivity grant sidewalks improvement. You may remember that this was a grant that we had received a couple of years ago to add sidewalks on Freestone Avenue, High Street, Route sixty-six, Airline Avenue, and Riverside Street. So I spoke with our town engineers recently, and they are currently working with DOT, and they will be putting together the bid documents, and they are working towards a summer twenty twenty-three construction schedule. So we're excited for that. If we could go to the next slide? In April of twenty twenty-two, we were awarded a seven hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Connecticut Department of Housing for improvements at our senior center. This includes a kitchen replacement, HVAC improvements, as well as a new generator so that the senior center will become a warming and cooling center. Renovations for this are currently in process now. We were also awarded a four hundred thousand dollar Steve Grant for the replacement of sidewalks along Main Street, beginning at Arvid Road and moving north. The plan here is to get as far as the funds allow. Currently, the site, the survey and right-of-way have been completed by our town engineers, and they're putting together the site plan. So we're encouraged by this, and we are eager to get these sidewalks in as well. The town was also awarded a four hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-five dollar extension grant from the Connecticut Department of Housing for the extension and expansion of the Shelter Diversion Grant Program for small cities that was previously in the works. And this extension fully funds the program through the end of twenty twenty-four. And I'm pleased to say that this allows for five employees who are working with Mercy Housing, and two of which are staffed here at the Buck Foreman Room or in the Buck Foreman Building in Portland all the time, five days a week. So it's great to see this, and I had a call today. And right now, there's four that are currently hired, and they're looking to hire one more. And the hopes is that we'll have three employees here, and that's a benefit for our residents as well. We were also awarded in twenty twenty-two a three hundred thousand dollar grant for a new park and trail project off of Airline Avenue. I'd like to thank State Senator Norm Needleman and State Representative Christie Carpino for their assistance in getting funding for this project. And the plan for this is to be able to utilize our riverfront and to be able to install a small boat launch at first, a canoe kayak launch. And we are currently in the process of working with DEEP to get the necessarily necessary approvals that we need. So this has been an exciting project as well. We also, in twenty twenty-two, were awarded a five hundred thousand, seven thirty-six dollar grant for the replacement of the track at Portland High School. Again, thank you to State Senator Norm Needleman and State Representative Christie Carpino for helping us secure this funding. There is more news to come at tomorrow night's Board of Selectmen meeting and budget workshop. We will be talking about the track and the upcoming proposal that we have for its replacement. I do want to point out that the Board of Selectmen this past year authorized American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding for the replacement of fire engine number two, a twelve-passenger senior center bus, and land use office improvements, including record digitization, GIS mapping, and online permitting. So all of those projects are moving forward, and those are good uses of ARPA dollars. Additional additional items of note, the airline trail. We continue to work on the Phase Two expansion of the airline trail. This includes extending the the trail from where it currently ends through the Camp Ingersoll YMCA property, through the Butler property, through more Eversource property, and it will, in the end of Phase Two, currently end at the Dairy Queen property. So we continue to work with this. Our town engineers are working with Butler Construction on getting a site plan that will that will work for them, and more news on this will be coming soon. We also had some recent energy savings that we're excited about with solar panels that have been added to the Brownstone Intermediate School. These panels are projected to save energy costs, roughly totaling two hundred thousand dollars over the next twenty years. So we're excited about this, and we also have another energy project at the Portland landfill that we hope to hear some good news on soon, so stay tuned to that. In twenty twenty-two, we also welcomed a new business to Portland, and that is Bernon, an Australian-based manufacturing company that have a contract with the U.S. Coast Guard and are repurposing and refurbishing U.S. cutters for the Coast Guard in town. This has provided a great boost to jobs in town and also a boost to two of our marinas, which they have purchased. I'd also like to note that in twenty twenty-two, Portland became a recovery-friendly community and a right-to-farm town. And I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support in moving those programs forward. And also Jesse Revicki, thank you for your work on the recovery-friendly community as well. So moving on, we'll get to the proposed budget for twenty twenty-four. So just to go over the process a little bit for those of you who would like a refresher, this budget is the First Selectmen's proposed budget. This comes from the First Selectmen's office in working with our Finance Director, Tom Robinson, as well as the various department heads. The next step is that this budget will go to the Board of Selectmen workshops beginning tomorrow evening at seven P M. right here in the Buck Foreman Building. And once the Board of Selectmen finalizes their budget, it then moves to the general public, where there will be a town meeting on May first, and then to a budget referendum to be held on May eighth at the Portland High School. And the polls will be open from six A M. until eight P M., and also absentee ballots will be available in the Town Clerk's Office. So to move on, the proposed budget for this year. This is the proposed expenditures. This is the general government and the Board of Education. The total is thirty-eight million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars, which equals a three point four nine percent increase in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The general government budget includes a three point two five percent increase, and the Board of Education budget is, and I will read that number, is fourteen million, seven hundred fifty thousand, five hundred ninety-three dollars, or three point two five percent. And the Board of Education budget is twenty-three million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred seventeen dollars, which is comes to a three point six four percent. I would like to point out that the First Selectmen, myself, I did reduce the Board of Education budget from the proposed amount by seventy-seven thousand dollars, and this was due to additional savings that the town realized on the town's health insurance renewal. So that was a reduction from the three point nine eight percent. Moving on. So to give you a little summary over the, a little background, I think it's a good idea to point out where we've been over the past five years over our total budget expenditures. And you'll see that in twenty twenty, we had a one point five nine percent budget expenditure increase overall. In twenty twenty-one, we had a one point seven zero percent increase. In twenty twenty-two, there was a two point five seven percent increase. In twenty twenty-three, there was a two point four five percent increase. And in twenty twenty-four, my proposed budget is a three point four nine percent proposed increase. All in all, this totals eleven point eight percent, which averages two point three six percent over the last five years. To further break this down, I'll go over the general government over the last five years, as well as the Board of Education. The general government in twenty twenty increased point three one percent. In fiscal year twenty-one, it increased point eight one percent. In fiscal year twenty-two, that number was three point four one percent. In fiscal year twenty-three, that number was two point two seven percent. And then this year, I am proposing a three point two five percent in fiscal year twenty-four, which equals ten point zero five percent, which is roughly two percent a year over the last five years. For the Board of Education in twenty twenty, they had a two point four two percent increase. In twenty twenty-one, there was a two point two six percent increase. In twenty twenty-two, there was a two point zero five percent increase. In fiscal year twenty-three, there was a two point five seven percent increase. And this year, in fiscal year twenty-four, there is a three point six four proposed increase, which totals twelve point nine four percent, or roughly two and a half percent per year for the Board of Education. Now, I would like to touch upon expenditures by function. So if you can go to the next slide, it shows on the general government side what where the typical increases are coming from. And you will see some larger increases in town services than in the past few years. This is due to a couple factors. It's due to increased costs, which affect all of us, as you know, as well as the ability to reallocate some funds to meet our current operational needs as well. So although some of these are higher than normal, I believe that this budget can support those increases. The general administration includes the Board of Selectmen budget, the First Selectmen's budget, ethics, elections, the assessor, tax collector, town clerk, central services, and technology. There's a couple things that are in here that are impacting this increase. The technology budget, for instance, is up largely due to increased requirements for what's called multi-factor authorization, or MFA. So there's increased security costs because of this, which have impacted our technology budget, as well as the assessor budget is up because I am proposing to make the assessor's clerk role, which is currently a seventeen point five hour a week position, into a thirty-five hour a week position. And my rationale behind this is because I believe that not only will this allow the assessor's office to better serve the public, but it will also free up the assessor to bring in potential more revenue for the town. So I see this as a as a revenue generating measure for the town. Public safety is up six point two five percent. This includes the fire department, fire marshal, police, dispatch, emergency management, and building, and emergency management. The police accountability continues to add costs to the police department. It's something that I think every town is grappling with in the state. My proposal here is to add a thirteenth officer that would begin January one of twenty twenty-four. And this would be to help take the burden off of overtime that we currently are incurring and to also better protect the public. I think that now is is the time to do this, and so that's why I put this in my budget. And I do have some figures that I will share with the Board of Selectmen later to show that we, percentage-wise, based on the number of officers that we have in town and the size of our population, this this is warranted. In addition, Public Works has a six point one five percent increase this year. Cost escalation continues to be a factor. And one other addition is I am proposing a, the replacement of a seasonal grounds position to that of a full-time position. Now, we have a currently a seasonal grounds position that comes in three days a week, from April to November, but the reality is there's more work that keeps getting put on our grounds department, and they don't have enough hands to get all the work done. And I feel like that they would be better suited with an additional employee. And just to give you an idea, over the past several years, we've added more more to our riverfront park. We've added the trailhead at the Airline Park, and we've added the Portland Recreational Complex without providing any additional help to do that. And so this budget seeks to keep keep up and make sure that all of our parks are able to be fully taken care of. Also, Health and Human Services, there has been a tremendous increase in demand for rides for our seniors. The the number of medical rides that are needed has skyrocketed, and I have received more letters asking for an increase to this service than any anything else combined over the over the past year from our residents. So that is part of the reason why that is up sharply. Next is our Portland Library, which has a three point nine seven percent increase, largely for utilities and a slight increase to books and digital media. Our fringe benefits for employees are up. This is largely due to anticipation of two upcoming retirements in fiscal year twenty twenty-four and planning for that. Also, our liability insurance at five point three percent, this is Kerma. This is costs continue to escalate, and these, this is a number that's directly passed down to us from our insurance provider. Debt service, the good news is that debt reduction has continued to fall off in this current fiscal year due to the final payment of our twenty eighteen capital lease. Transfers, and this includes capital, as well as transfers out to animal control, youth services, building maintenance, resource recovery, parks and recreation, open space, and capital improvements. And this is largely due to increases really across the board, but mainly in our animal control officer, a shift in hours is is partly responsible for this, as well as some other some other items. But it's really the animal control that bears the brunt of that increase. Moving on, we'll move on to capital items. Capital items continue to remain a priority for me. Over the past fiscal year, the Board of Selectmen and myself, we've we've looked to utilize American Rescue funding as best we can to continue to fund capital items throughout the year without impacting the taxpayers of the town. That was the reasoning and the rationale behind the fire truck replacement of engine two, as well as the senior center van. And we still do have roughly three hundred sixty thousand dollars of American Rescue funds at this time, which we will continue to utilize as best we can to keep costs in check. If we can go to the next page. But this year, as part of my proposed budget, the capital items that would be funded through the general fund would be three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This includes forty-five thousand dollars for Board of Education system-wide improvements. This is a vehicle purchase for a van. The there is ten thousand dollars proposed for SCBA bottle replacement for the fire department. There is forty thousand dollars proposed for the replacement of outboard motor on Marine Seven for the fire department as well, as well as the need to purchase a two hundred five thousand dollar trackless mower to replace the one that we currently have that is at end of life. There is eighteen thousand dollars proposed for upgrades to computers and backup appliances. And there are fifteen thousand dollars proposed for townwide reevaluation that we allocate funds for on a yearly basis for when we do our revaluation. I do want to point out that we also have LoSiP funding, which is grant funding, available to us, and we are utilizing that for twenty-five thousand dollars of parks and recreation field improvements, as well as eighteen thousand, five hundred sixty-three dollars for funding of municipal parking lot improvements and twenty thousand dollars for masonry repairs. My budget also includes a fifty thousand dollar transfer to our open space to be utilized for the airline trail, to be utilized for upcoming grant applications as well. There are many grant applications that require a twenty percent match, so I did want to include some monies for the airline trail as well. The next item, I think it's important to show how for every one hundred dollars of taxpayer money that the town spends, how that is broken out by department and by services. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see that in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the proposed budget as it currently is would be for every one hundred dollars spent, four dollars and twenty-five cents goes to administration and finance. This is up slightly from four dollars and fifteen cents in twenty twenty-three. Public safety is six dollars and forty-four cents. This is up slightly from six dollars and twenty-seven cents in fiscal year twenty-three. In Public Works, there is a six point six nine, six dollars and sixty-nine cents, which is up from six dollars and fifty-two cents in twenty twenty-three. Planning is slightly down to fifty-three cents from fifty-five cents in twenty twenty-three. Health and Human Services has an increase of four cents to one dollar and two cents. And the library sees a one cent increase to two dollars and eleven cents from two dollars and ten cents. Fringe benefits goes to nine dollars and twenty-one cents from nine dollars and eight cents. And risk management is up slightly by one penny to sixty-two cents. So the total general government operating out of the hundred dollars is thirty dollars and eighty-seven cents. And then in addition to this, we have debt service. And as you may recall, our debt service did fall off due to the ending of a capital lease from twenty eighteen. And that is why debt service fell from five dollars and twenty-five cents in fiscal year twenty-three to four dollars and sixteen cents in fiscal year twenty-four. Transfers, transfers out, increase from three dollars and seven cents to three dollars and forty-five cents. So the total general government is thirty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. This is a slight decrease from the thirty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents last year. And the Board of Education, you'll see, is sixty-one dollars and fifty-two cents for every hundred dollars spent, which is a slight increase from fiscal year twenty-three. Next, I'd like to talk about our revenues in town. Next, I'd like to talk about our revenues in town. So the major revenue we receive from the state is our cost education sharing grant. This revenue is projected to be four million six hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars. And this is seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen thousand twenty-nine dollars more than in twenty-two, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three. As far as the proposed fees that the town charges for services, the total expected revenue is one million three hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. This is a seven thousand six hundred fifty-dollar increase from the previous fiscal year. And this is primarily due to some factors, including the cost of the home sales have gone up and that has made our conveyance revenue go up as well. So that's a large part of that, that slight increase. I, I'm also pleased to say that our investment income has increased. This is one of the side effects from the Federal Reserve continuing to increase the, the rates. Right now, we are projected to receive revenue of investment income of two hundred, two thousand five hundred dollars. And as long as interest rates continue to rise, this number could be higher in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So for proposed taxes in two thousand and twenty-four, currently, as the budget is currently proposed, there is a point nine six percent, point nine six mil increase from the previous mil rate. This will raise approximately one million five, fifty-two thousand four hundred fifty-seven dollars additionally. And I do want to point out that this budget does reflect the governor's proposed mil rate cap, which is in effect of thirty-two point four six on motor vehicles. So the way that works is that motor vehicles under this budget will be capped at thirty-two point four six. And the remainder of the, which causes the rest of the, the mil rate on personal property and real estate to increase at a higher rate. So that's why you see a point nine six percent. Had that not been in effect, the mil rate increase would have been lower. It would have been around, I think, point eight, I want to say. Let's see, so we can move to the next slide? I do want to touch upon our grand list. The last year, we had some very good news as far as our grand list is concerned. It continues to rise. This year, it rose by seven million nine hundred thirteen thousand five hundred twenty dollars or point eight four percent. It's not as much as we would like it to rise, but it is trending in the right direction and it does help us to keep our, our increases in check. And the entire value of our grand list is currently nine hundred fifty million three hundred seventy-five thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. And as I said, this proposed mil rate will be three hundred, or thirty-three dollars, thirty-three point four is the proposed mil rate for fiscal year twenty-four. And that is a two point nine six percent increase in the mil rate from the adopted budget in fiscal year twenty-three. And I do want to thank Rich Lasky, our assessor, for continuing to work and to help us grow our grand list. I'd like to touch briefly on the water and sewer budgets. And there will be public comment for anyone who wishes to speak on water and sewer at the time of public comment later. For water, we are seeing a budget of one million seven hundred two thousand six hundred ninety-seven, which is a thirty-one thousand seventy-four dollar decrease or a one point seven nine percent decrease from the prior year. This is due to some savings on the price that we pay from MDC for our water. For the sewer department, the sewer budget is one million two hundred forty-six thousand nine hundred twenty-five dollars. This is a twenty-nine thousand thirty-four dollar increase or two point three eight percent from the fiscal year twenty-three. Next, we have budget workshops. Our first budget workshop, as I mentioned, is tomorrow evening, March fifteenth. We also have budget workshops on the twenty-first and the twenty-second. Then the Board of Selectmen will be holding deliberations on the budget on March twenty-eighth and March twenty-ninth. And the plan is for the Board of Selectmen to have an approved budget by their April fifth meeting. Once we do that, the, the, the budget will then be sent to a town meeting where the taxpayers and residents can discuss that and comment and potentially change the budget. And then lastly, there will be a referendum on Monday, May eighth, from six AM until eight PM. And absentee ballots will be available as well. And thank you, that concludes my presentation on my portion of the budget. And next, I'd like to welcome Dr. Britton, our superintendent, to present the Board of Education budget as well. And then after that, we will have public comment. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Maybe if we could pull up the, the Google slides I shared with you or the PowerPoint. I hope you've all recovered from the lost hour of sleep this weekend, right? I'm feeling a little bleary-eyed still. I always like falling back, never like springing out. Although I think this is the last time we do this, right? Isn't, do you like, well, potentially, we'll see. But I hope you're all rested. So I do want to recognize that I, I have two people here that are, are available to answer questions with me or otherwise. I can't see them, but I have Stephanie Fergola, our business manager, and Laurel Steinhouser are over here. Laurel's our board chair and Stephanie's our business manager. They can certainly, Stephanie, Laurel, feel free to chime in particularly if, you know, any questions come up at the end or if you think I don't characterize anything accurately. So if you guys could please put up the, the presentation I shared with you, I'll be happy to talk through both how the, the Board of Education budget was developed and what's included in the Board of Education budget. So why don't we go to the next, the first slide, next slide after this one? All right. So I want to spend a little bit of time giving everyone a sense of how this budget was put together. It, it's a, it's a long process. It's a healthy process that the, the schools go through every year. And it largely begins with the business manager, Stephanie and I, meeting with all of our building leaders who have also collaborated with all of our teachers and department heads to identify some, some requests. This year, I tried, I did something a little different. I, I said to our principals and our school leaders, bring me what you think you need, right? I didn't do any kind of zero-based budgeting. I wanted to get a sense from them of, of what they were looking for, right? Understanding that, you know, right at the beginning, their requests were never going to go through to the final budget proposals, but it was a, a healthy opportunity for us to take a look at what the needs are that are out there that, that, you know, may not be met at this time. So after that process, you know, some initial discussions with the department heads and the principals, we reviewed all of those requests and made some cuts right off, off, off the bat. To start with, you know, I did get, receive a request from the middle school and Brownstone principal for an additional special education teacher. Currently, they're sharing a special education teacher. That creates some logistical challenges and it would be easier to have an additional special education teacher at each of those buildings. But unfortunately, you know, we, we had to make some cuts to begin with. Also, at the high school, middle school, there are two libraries and only one library media specialist currently. So we have one library media specialist for two libraries. She divides her time, which means that the libraries aren't open for students for large portions of the day. Of course, you know, each year we've considered adding an additional library media specialist. That request was brought forward to me again, but unfortunately, we couldn't, we couldn't, couldn't bring that forward. Brownstone would like some additional support with some music. And our middle school also asked for some additional support with some math intervention to help our students continue to progress forward with those math skills. Again, unfortunately, all of those things that you see there on that list, we reduced right at the beginning of the process. After considering those initial requests, you know, we were looking at an eleven point two percent increase, right? Clearly, I think we all have to recognize, and I do, that an eleven point two percent increase was not a reasonable place to start. So we started making some additional reductions. If you can go to the next slide, please. So to get us started, Stephanie and I took a look at the numbers and we asked our department heads and building principals to make some first-round cuts. So you can see out of our curriculum instruction and technology budget, we reduced those requests by fifteen percent. Out of our support services budget and all of our building budgets and our athletics budget, I asked the principals to make some additional cuts to the tune of five percent. They did. You can see the amounts that they were cut there. I shared a list of what all those cuts, cuts consisted of with the Board of Education. Certainly, these are things that, that we would, would love to have, but, you know, we're, we're all aware that we have to, you know, come forward with some reasonable requests and, and those were made to begin with. Now, even after those cuts, when we ran the numbers, Stephanie and I recognized we are at a nine point five two percent increase. Again, certainly something that wasn't reasonable, you know, that's way too high, not, not something that in these, this fiscal climate, you know, we could get behind. So I went back to the leadership team and, and we identified additional cuts. So if we can go to the next slide, I want to talk to you through additional reductions that we've made. So from that nine point five two percent, we did reduce five additional paraprofessional positions. These are support services that we provide largely one-on-one for some of our special needs students. We did reduce a math teacher at high school. We had a retirement that's going to increase math class sizes slightly at the high school. High school enrollment is down a little bit, so that the math class sizes aren't going to be dramatically larger, but they are going to be larger, right? We're still going to offer the full complement of math courses, but the student enrollment in those courses is going to go up slightly. Stephanie also put in a placeholder of master step seven. This year, we've had some retirements and resignations of teachers that are more veteran and are compensated at higher rates. This year, we're going to have to prioritize during our hiring season, finding newer teachers, right? I'm going to be asking the principals to, as we consider our applicant pool, give some preference to, to new teachers, teachers in the first couple of years of their tenure as teachers. Newer teachers, as we know, cost a little less than veteran teachers. So Stephanie and I put in some placeholders there to account for some retirements at the higher end of the wage scale and we're going to be looking to hire some newer teachers this year. We can go to the next slide, please. Kindergarten section, this is always an X-factor. We don't know, we never know how many new kindergarten students we're going to get. Registration occurs throughout the spring and goes into the summer. This year, we had a larger kindergarten class. We had only budgeted for five kindergarten teachers. We had to add the sixth kindergarten teacher. I, I did request that from the Board of Education and they granted that request this summer. So now we have six kindergarten teachers. I added a sixth kindergarten teacher as a placeholder for next year in anticipation that that, that enrollment may be larger, but I've taken it out now. So we've only budgeted now for five kindergarten positions. If we have a hundred and ten new kindergarten students, we're going to need another kindergarten teacher, but it could go the other way, too. If we have, you know, seventy or fewer kindergarten students, which I don't anticipate, we could reduce that from five to four kindergarten teachers. So I did pull out the additional section of kindergarten from the budget as part of this round of reductions. Ms. Davis, our, our director of pupil services, had included a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar placeholder for tuition placements for students who are eighteen to twenty-two, who are, are going to graduate from Portland High School, but are still eligible for support services. Historically, we've tuitioned these students to Middletown for their transition program. We're going to have a larger number this year, so it makes more sense for us to build our own in-house program. So we're very excited to build a new program for our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old students. That's why, Ryan, and thank you for including that van in the capital improvement budget. That's going to be a centerpiece of what we're going to need to build this program. But we pulled that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out and we're going to build this new program that will certainly save us the tuition we would pay in those contracted services. And also, it will be wonderful to keep those students in district as opposed to sending them to Middletown or, or other places. You heard Ryan mention that the insurance increase came in lower than expected. During this part of the budget development process, we didn't know what the insurance premium increase was. Stephanie included a placeholder at four percent. We're very grateful that it came in lower than that, but that's why I had that star on there. And there was some inherent savings in there. But at this point in the budget process, we were hoping for a four percent, hoping that it wouldn't be higher, but we're grateful that it came in, in lower. In normal times, Stephanie includes a placeholder in the budget for sixty open-choice students. We do receive ten thousand dollars per student from Hartford for, as part of our, our commitment to the open-choice students. We're going to now budget for seventy open-choice students. So again, that will help offset some of the, the budget costs. We go to the next slide, please. In normal times, we budget for ten bus routes. In general, larger, every large bus that we have on the road costs us about sixty-two thousand dollars to run for the year. As we know, during the reopening year, it was difficult to find bus drivers. So during the very bad days of last year, we only had six buses running last year. And that, that was very stressful and, you know, created some inconsistent pickup and drop-off times and some very large capacity issues on the, on the bus. That was a staffing issue. This year, we're fortunate, we are, we are, are better. And we only, we have nine now on, on the road as opposed to six. But we've learned that nine works, right? We have, well, we've budgeted for ten. Historically, we're going to budget for nine bus routes next year. I've spoken with our bus contractor. They believe that they can staff that, they've, they've agreed to it. And so with, with nine buses on the road instead of ten, that will generate some savings for us. And then, of course, our administrators had included a little bit of money for each of them to go to conferences and, and keep their skills sharp as our leadership team. Unfortunately, I, I've had to pull that out. We'll develop in-house professional development for our, our administrators and we're not going to be able to fund any PD for our, our district leaders for next year. So even with all of those cuts, we were at a six point oh five percent increase, right? Now, again, all of us recognize that a six, bringing forward a six percent increase budget would be unreasonable. I, in, in some, even some surrounding communities, you're probably hearing or reading about north of six percent increases. We decided against doing that, you know? We really wanted to, to try to trim that down and, and make sure that what we, we brought forward represented the absolute needs in the district and that, I, I feel like we did a pretty good job of doing that. So if we can go to the next slide. To get us even lower from a six point five percent, the leadership team, Stephanie and I met again and identified some even further cuts. Now, now things are starting to get a little stressful, I'm not going to lie. You know, at, at this point, you know, we're, we're really getting to some of the core programming in the district and doing some things that, you know, have my attention and certainly are some things that Stephanie and I are going to have to keep a close eye on as we head into next year. First, we recommend allocating two hundred thousand dollars of the remaining COVID relief funding that we received. If you remember, last year, I asked and the Board of Selectmen and taxpayers agreed to not spend that money. At that time, when we were building the budget, we didn't know if we were out of the pandemic, you know? We couldn't quite be sure. Because we didn't spend that money, we still have it. That money has to be spent by the end of next year. So Stephanie and I are comfortable applying two hundred thousand of that towards the budget. Now, we have to understand what that means. That's a, a fiscal cliff, right? I mean, we're, we're, we're using that one-time revenue source to offset the budget. That is something we're going to have to keep a close eye on and it won't be there beyond next year. But that two hundred thousand number is, is a number that I'm, I'm confident Stephanie and I and the Board of Education that we can manage this year. And also, we will likely see the effects of, of, of the end of that funding source next year. So I'm comfortable saying let's apply two hundred thousand dollars of our remaining COVID relief fund to help offset the budget costs for next year. Additionally, I mentioned that we're going to build this transition program and save two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're going to do that by reallocating one of our, our special education teachers from Gildersleeve to staff that program. Currently, we have four special education teachers at Gildersleeve. We're going to go down to three special education teachers and reallocate one of those teachers to help us design this new transition program. So we're building a, a program that's going to generate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tuition savings with our current in-house faculty, right? So that is even additional savings. We don't have to add enough to eat. We're going to look to our existing, the existing staff to build that program and support those students. And I'm very grateful to Dawn Davis for her vision on this and the way she's worked so carefully to, to make this happen. And I'm very excited about the program. It's going to be a wonderful addition for our students. We further reduced two additional paraprofessional physicians. I am very anxious and aware of that. Those paraprofessional physicians reflect our students' support service needs. We have to keep a careful eye on that as we go into next year. Go to the next slide, please. We reduced summer curriculum writing hours that we provide our teachers to keep themselves sharp and keep our curriculum up to date. Our new assistant principal, who is responsible for athletics, had asked for an additional assistant. assistant volleyball and assistant golf coach. We pulled those out, so hopefully we won't have to make cuts, but without assistant coaches, if there's only one head coach, that is a possibility that there may be cuts to keep the team sizes reasonable. We won't know that until tryouts begin, but I did remove those positions from the requests. We did have a retirement at high school, an art teacher has retired. Instead of refilling that position at a full-time level, we're going to refill with .6 of that position, so about half-time art teacher at high school. And in doing so, we're able to reduce the staffing at high school in that area by .4 FTE. And we've also eliminated a literacy curriculum specialist, something that our director of curriculum is concerned about, but you know, it's something we had to do, I believe, to get the budget towards a reasonable place. Next slide, please. We cut back on some software. Actually, the software was end-of-life being anyway, so we're going to have to, you know, build our own in-house system by which we support our teachers and our administrators. And then you'll see the star there. I had in there a placeholder reduction of one teacher that we haven't identified yet. So there's a placeholder of one TBD, to-be-determined certified teaching position that I identified. Again, I want to wait till the spring to, I was going to wait till the spring to see what that position would be, but I'm going to loop back to that, because I want to talk a little bit about the effect of the $77,000 reduction from the health insurance and what the Board of Education and I had decided in the final process of approving the budget. And then finally, I did ask the departments to do an additional 5% reduction in their budget. So from those requests that they brought forward, they made the first round cut of 5%, I asked for an additional 5%, and they went back in. And again, these reflect all number of different things, paper, pens, pencils, crayons, you know, all the different instructional supplies that our teachers use. Those were reduced by additional 5%. So, at that point, I couldn't cut anymore, right? I mean, I felt like at that point, we'd already cut pretty deeply into the core of our programming and what we need to continue to provide our students some outstanding academic services, and that's where we were. So we were at a $23,658,317 request that reflected a 3.98% increase over the current fiscal year. That was the budget that I brought to our Board of Education. If you go to the next slide, please. The Board of Education, we had two workshops. We're a very thoughtful board. It's Board of Education Appreciation Month, by the way, let me give them a shout-out. They work very hard, and they ask some really thoughtful and engaging questions, and throughout that process, some additional tweaking to the budget was made. So, I had included in the budget a request for some administrative support for our director, our assistant principal with responsibility for athletics, and our director of curriculum instruction and technology. Unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, the reality is that is something we're not going to be able to go forward with, so the Board of Education asked me to remove that from the budget. The Board of Education did ask me to put a para-position back in. This para will be a proactive support for our kindergarten classrooms. Many of our kindergarten students arrive to us with as-yet-undiagnosed needs, so this additional paraprofessional will be there to support those students as we go through the diagnostic process. And then, I, at that time when we were at the board, I did notify the board that the insurance premium came in at a 3% increase, where we had put the placeholder at 4%. That was a $77,000 reduction from the insurance. I recommended to the board that we not cut that $77,000 and instead take out the teacher TBD. If you remember, I mentioned that I identified a teacher as to-be-determined cut. The board saw the wisdom of that, decided to essentially re-ledger the $77,000 reduction from the insurance function, line item, over to the certified salaries so that we wouldn't have to cut that position. Overall, that didn't change the total budget number. Those were within-budget adjustments that Stephanie and I made, and the Board of Education vote and approved the 3.98% increase. So what I'm presenting you tonight is the Board of Education-approved budget. Next slide, please. Since the approval of that budget, Ryan did make an additional reduction. That is the $77,000. It was sort of a double switch that we made here. Now, it's okay, right? So I'm not prepared at this time to say exactly how we're going to make that reduction, but you know, in the $23 million budget, $77,000 is something that is manageable. It might show up in the form of a staff reduction, it may not. It largely depends on what, if any, end-of-year revenues we might be able to generate, and there's still a little, too many unknowns at this point in the year, but at this point, I'm comfortable with the $77,000 reduction and feeling okay with the 3.64% increase, and I appreciate that that's the number now that's going forward to the Board of Selectmen and hopefully the voters. So, I just ran through, if you go to the next slide, what the reductions were, like all the things we cut. So I want to give you a very quick overview of what is in the budget. So what is included in the budget? If we go to the next slide, please. At Valley View Elementary School, I'm not going to read them all for you, but that is the staffing overview. That is all of the people who do such a wonderful job with our youngest learners every day at Valley View. It's an amazing place. They do incredible work with our pre-K, kindergarten, and grade-one students. So there is the funding there for those positions as well as extracurricular activities, instructional supplies, and the things that our teachers at Valley View need to keep our students highly engaged. Our class sizes with this staffing profile at Valley View will average 15 to 17 students in grades kindergarten and grade one, and our pre-K classes will average between nine to 11 students with this staffing profile. Next slide, please. Gildersleeve Elementary School, our students in grades two through four, that's the staffing profile at Gildersleeve. Again, these are the people who work every day with Portland students and are doing an amazing job educating them. I'm very proud of everybody at Gildersleeve, and Ryan Wallstrom, our principal there, is doing terrific work. So those positions are all funded at Gildersleeve, and there is funding there for the upkeep, maintenance, all the instructional supplies, extracurricular and co-curricular programming. At this staffing profile, our classes in grades two through four will average class size between 15 to 20 students, average around 18 students. Next slide, please. Brownstone Intermediate School, this is a school that services our students in grades five and six. Terrific faculty, unbelievable, and I'm very proud of our acting principal, Mike Sierson. He's doing amazing work, and again, I'm very proud of him and everything that he and all of the teachers and support staff do at Brownstone. That's the staffing profile. Funding is there for the instructional supplies, upkeep, maintenance, equipment, things that Brownstone needs. With this staffing profile, class sizes in grades five and six will average 18 to 24 students. Generally speaking, we're around 22 students per class at Brownstone. Next slide, please. Portland Middle School, for our students in grades seven and eight, again, here's your staffing profile. This additionally provides all the funding for middle school athletics, co-curricular, extracurricular, the instructional supplies, resources, workbooks, textbooks, all the things that are needed to continue to provide our students in grade seven and eight with the academic services that we provide. With this staffing profile, our class sizes in grades seven and eight will average between 18 to 24 students. Generally, we're looking at a class size of around 22 in grade seven and eight at the middle school. At the high school, here's our staffing profile. This does reflect the reduction of the math teacher and reduction in our teaching position. So this will be our staffing profile for next year. The budget includes support for academics, co-curricular, and extracurricular activities, which are robust. If you haven't gotten your tickets yet, once upon a mattress, tomorrow, Friday and Saturday night, go, I can't wait, I'll be there Friday night. But again, that's just a snapshot into the outstanding work that's done at high school. Also, straight tournament basketball tomorrow night, too. All of those types of things are funded with this budget. With this staffing profile, our class sizes at the high school will average 18 to 24 Next slide, please. Outstanding athletic department in grades seven through eight. Here is what is included in that position, our assistant principal, who is also responsible for athletics, 32 coaches, and then the funding to support athletic programming for students in grades seven through 12. Next slide. For our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Technology, obviously that director, we have three support positions in that department full-time and then one hourly, part-time support position. In addition, we have the funding for the IT and professional development that we need. We're also very grateful that we got that connectivity grant. Otherwise, I think our budget would certainly be higher as we strive to keep our Chromebook replacement cycle for our one-to-one devices up to speed, but because we got that grant, we're in pretty good shape. There's our staffing profile for curriculum, instruction, and technology. Next slide, please. Support services, here is our, a look at what our support services provides our students, our Director of Support Services, our English Language Arts Teacher, Speech and Language, all of the support services, occupational therapy, speech and language, funding to support all of our in-house and out-placements, and the only addition this year will be that transition program that we're going to build for our 18 to 22-year-old students for next year. So there's our staffing profile for support services. Next slide, please. We have Mr. Shea here, who's doing a wonderful job, is our Director of Facilities. This slide reflects his staff. I included the custodians at the building level, but this gives you a picture of what our district-levels staff profile for our facilities department. You're going to hear a lot this spring about the work of our Facility Study Committee. I'm very excited for April 3rd. We're closing in on some recommendations, and I anticipate having a report to the town. These folks here in this facilities department do remarkable work keeping some aging facilities and some infrastructure that is in need of significant repairs operating efficiently, and I can't thank them enough, they do a wonderful job. Next slide. And finally, Small But Mighty, this is your central office profile. It is me, Stephanie, my administrative assistant, and the accounts payable specialist. These are the folks that work at a central office, and I consider us the heartbeat of the district. We keep things together and we make the important decisions like today's early dismissal, right? Though I'm not sure that we need to. So, that's our central office support. Final slide there, I just want to give you a sense of, in addition to LEA funds, the funds that are derived from the taxpayers here in Portland, we derive funds from a variety of other sources. You saw Ryan mentioned the ECS, that is the primary grant that we receive from the state. ESER funds, that is the COVID relief funding from that $200,000 that I'm recommending we applied, and then of course, some other requirements that we have to use it for, including summer learning programs and support services. We are expecting $347,000 for a school improvement grant. I'm very grateful to Eric Martin and Ryan Wallstrom for writing that grant and securing that funding stream for us. I believe we have three more years on that grant, so that is very helpful in making sure we're providing academic and support services. Title 1, 2, 3, and 4 in our IDEA grant. These are all of the federal grants that we receive for specialized support services as well as, we're a Title I school at Valley View. Excess Cost Grant, this is a grant that we received for monies beyond a threshold for student support services. Our Oak Hill rental is in place. As you know, we rent two classrooms to Oak Hill at Brownstone. This will be our fourth year in that arrangement with Oak Hill. You see there the tuition that we receive for our participation with the open choice program, and I hope you saw the River East this past week. We're very excited that we received a mental health grant that we wrote this year that we're getting $117,000. This year, $117,000, next year, and $70,000 the year after to help us make sure that we have a social worker to support our students at Portland Middle School. So those are the numbers that are coming in, those are in addition to LEA dollars that we receive from the town of Portland. That was a lot. I'm sure there must be questions, otherwise, if there aren't, I provided copies of this to you. This presentation and the budget workshops are all available on the high school website. You can see recordings of those. Otherwise, anybody who has any questions, feel free to email me or ask them out.
All right. Next on our agenda this evening is public comment. I do have some letters from residents that, I'm not going to read all of the letters because they are all the same, but I'm going to read one, so you can get the general idea. Dear First Selectman Ryan Curley, this is to bring to your kind attention the need for an increase in medical transportation available through the Waverly Portland Senior Center. I currently utilize this service to get to my much-needed medical appointments, both locally and out of town. If it were not for this service, I would find it very difficult to take care of my medical needs. I rely heavily on this service, as do other seniors within the community. Many people who utilize this service are receiving critical medical care, such as chemo, radiation, injections, surgery, et cetera, at these appointments, and would be in a life-threatening situation if they weren't able to get that care. Of late, there have been times when I have not been able to secure transportation for a medical appointment as the service is, quote, "at capacity" for that week, and no additional rides can be scheduled. Therefore, I am urging you to increase funding to this extremely important and beneficial service available to the seniors here in Portland. An increase in funding would allow the center to schedule more medical rides throughout the week and thus ensure the well-being of our Portland seniors. I thank you for your continued support in this matter. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, six of these letters from residents that I did want to read into the record. I do know that I did put that, I do want to say, I did put an increase into the budget for that reason, and I think it's also why the Board of Selectmen approved a new van, a new bus purchase as well. So I did want to put those into the record. And with that, we'll open this public hearing up to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment?
Just going back to letters, do you think you should read the names and addresses into the record?
Well, I was thinking about that, but, I mean, I will. Janet P. Johnson, at One Brush Pasture Lane. This one, I can't read the signature on, so, but it is signed. Let's see. Joe Capiter, One Brush Pasture Lane, Portland, Connecticut. Now, Brush Pasture Lane is a condo, so, units, so. There's also Sheila Sale at One Brusher Pasture Lane, Unit 115. Edward Kuzniewski at One Brush Pasture Lane as well, and I think that is, oh, and then one from Caroline Murray, and Caroline is at 44 Ridgeview Road as well. And her, actually, her letter was different, but it says the same thing. And because of the personal nature of the medical nature, I don't really want to, you know, get into too much, but those are the letters that I received on that. And then, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment publicly? Dave, would you like to come up?
Just state your name and address.
Dave Murphy, 40 Carrissell Drive in Portland. Just a curiosity thing, I've asked this before, but never gotten answers. What has been the last two to three years surplus or deficit of the budget? I know two or three years ago, don't quote me on the year, we had like $800,000 surplus, we bought some snowplows and some other things, so I'd like to know, kind of keep that in the back of our mind, where do we, what have we been historically seeing, and then I know Tom's here, we probably got all the taxes already in, what are we estimating for this year? That would be my question.
Dave, thank you for the question. I don't think Tom has an answer at this time, but I will say that the audit from our previous fiscal year is, has been completed, and our auditors will be doing a presentation on April 5th, and they'll be going over that very topic. So that's a question that, if you would, you know, we can ask. I know the Board of Selectmen has also expressed interest in that as well, but I do know we don't have any projections on the But I do know we don't have any projections on the current fiscal year that we're in because you have to remember that we not only collect taxes in July, but also January. And then, it takes a little bit to make sure that all that gets in. And so we don't have any information on that at this time, but thank you. Is there any additional public comment? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 8:06 PM. And thank you again for all attending, and I hope you get home safe, and hopefully, the roads aren't too bad. So thank you all.